All rise please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order with a determination, a quorum. Call roll call here. Baumgartner, Ebers.
Here at Ferguson.
Here.
I am here. Patterness.
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the part of the meeting where we'll break for public forum. If anybody from the public wants to address council, now is the time. We ask that you provide your name for the meeting record with addressing council. And remind you that speaking times will be limited to three minutes. And if that needs to go longer than that, we will do everything we can to provide, you know, your resources for after, after meeting conversation. So if anybody from the public wishes to address the council, now is your time.
Yeah.
Anybody on Zoom?
Register online.
Okay, well, we'll close down the public forum and start with the setting of the agenda. We have agenda in front of us and had some time to look it over. I'll for motion to approve it. Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by Ferguson to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Agenda is approved. We'll move down to the consent agenda. It includes meeting minutes from April one. Park and Rec Committee bylaws that have been updated, Planning Commission bylaws that have been updated, Solid Waste Services, RFP draft, Electric Department Purchase Request, and Resolution forty-three, hiring of a part-time worker for the Public Works slash Parks Department. Call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Ebers to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Consent agenda carries as written. We'll move down to discussion items. We have a representative from Nuvera here to present some information regarding fiber coming to town.
Kathy Lund.
Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kathy Lund with Nuvera. I would like to share some information with you tonight about our company and about our fiber internet expansion project that will be starting actually in May, just a few short weeks away. The first couple of slides, just talk a little bit about our company. We were founded in nineteen oh five by farmers, and at that time, they were trying to get access to everyone with the technology at that time, which was phone service. So we fast forward to today. We are a leading connections company. We're delivering on that early vision to provide reliable and affordable access to today's technology, which is broadband. Little bit about our company. We are headquartered in New Ulm. We have about two hundred and fifteen employees. We are a public company. We do have local offices in eleven different communities, ten of those in Minnesota and one in Iowa. We serve over seventy thousand connections with voice, video, or internet. And we're an owner of Minnesota, Fiber Minnesota, which is a statewide network, fiber network. A little bit about our journey to building gig cities. We've been putting fiber into the ground for many years, but starting in twenty twenty-two, we really started accelerating that and not only taking it to what we would call a node within a community or in the rural area, but up right to the customer's home. And so we started overbuilding all of our existing communities and also started edging out to communities that were near our service area and did not have a current fiber provider. So the first areas that we hit, as I said, were our existing areas. Last year, we brought fiber internet to Arlington, Dassel, and Hector. This year, we will be starting projects in Belle Plaine, Coquato, Olivia, and some areas in Shakopee. These are multi-year projects, so that we'll be, you know, working on all of them for a few years. This just talks a little bit about fiber. You know, fiber is really the gold standard. It get, we do symmetrical speeds. It helps residents to do whatever they need to in their home or in their business. And it's, it is future-proof. It will, will continue to, right now, we offer a gig service, but then we'll be able to offer a two gig and a five gig and, you know, without changing that fiber. It's just the electronics that will change. It's also a benefit to your community. You know, the city of Olivia will be able to attract and talk about from an economic development perspective, that they have a fiber provider that will bring fiber internet to any location in the city. It's also a competitive advantage for workers who may want to work from home and not have to move out of town. And they can stay in these, these communities and the settings that they prefer. This is our residential pricing for internet. We have three options, one hundred, five hundred, and a gig. We do have a nine ninety-five modem rental, and then the home wifi is included if you choose the five hundred and gig options, or you can choose to do your own home wifi with your own router. We do have federal lifeline programs available for those who qualify and residents. In order for them to have no charge for us to bring that drop up to their home, we ask them to sign up ahead of time. It's much more cost-effective for us when the contractor is there to bring that drop to the home than for us to have to come back later and put a drop in. So customers sign up in advance. There's no charge for that. If they sign up later, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar cost. This is, the area in red is our proposed twenty twenty-four project area. They were actually just finalizing some of this this afternoon, and so I don't have that final map, but Finley Engineering out of Slaton is doing our engineering work. And so we do plan to do the city in a three-year proposal, about four hundred and fifty locations would be covered this first year. It's about a one point five million dollar investment for that first year. And each of the following years will have, I think we figured there's probably just under eight hundred locations remaining after that, seven hundred and fifty maybe, so we'll split that between the next two years. This slide talks a little bit about the construction process. Right now, we are getting some notifications out to residents. You may have seen some doing site prep. They've been out doing surveys and they will set the plan for the whole community at this time, the whole city, and we'll just do a piece of it this year. The fiber construction is what we call a mainline construction. That's the primary fiber that goes into the facilities. And that will start happening, I believe, probably about mid-May. It's the projected timeframe. Drop construction is where we connect a fiber drop from the mainline to the home or to the business. And then we test and splice that to make sure everything is connecting, and then we can install service. Collaboration is really a critical part of our success and the success for the city and the residents. We just need to make sure that we are communicating with the city, with the employees, with the PUC, so that everybody's on the same page as to where construction's going to be happening, what other projects do you have going on that we need to avoid, you know, what are areas that we need to avoid? We've had some years for multi-year projects where we've maybe flipped an area because, you know, in the following year, the city had something going on in that area, so then we, we took a different area. So it's really critical for us to have good communication with the city and the PUC. Also, just making sure that, you know, from a process permitting and all of those pieces, that that goes smoothly. We have learned, you know, to, to slow our projects down a little bit, you know, in our first years, we thought we can, we can go in and we can do a thousand locations in a, in a smaller community. But that's, it's a lot. It's a lot for the city staff. It's a lot for our crews to, because there's multiple crews going then. And we just found it was, it was difficult to complete, and it was, we've had much better success doing a multi-year, smaller subset of, of locations. Any questions on, on the project?
Where are you looking into the fiber, existing fiber that we have?
It is actually. So this project came up for us relatively quickly. We always kind of had Olivia on our radar. We, well, since twenty twenty-two, we kind of started doing a multi-year plan. And we'd actually kind of had Olivia slated to start in twenty twenty-five. But one of the areas we were planning to do this year, we were not able to get a fiber lease to get to that city. We, we prefer to have, use our own fiber, but there's some areas where instead of building twenty miles of fiber, it might make sense to lease. In our situation here, we actually had fiber to the city of Olivia. We had participated in a project a few years ago to bring fiber to the library. And I'm trying to remember if it was the school, but we did have a mainline fiber that came up through the city because we also go to Bird Island and, you know, have some other communities around this, this area. So yes, very good question. We, and so when I contacted Elizabeth, I was kind of like, not sure if this is going to work with your timeframe, but we could do this this year. So, and she was, yeah, very gracious and meeting with us on short notice and it's been expressed by all members of the council and residents that this was a priority, so we were very excited to get the call. Yeah, so it worked out, it worked out well for us.
Like nice in the fiber from through a yard or give it trench?
We do have to trench it. Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep. So there will be, and then we do restoration. You know, we're always, we prefer to work with the resident to make sure, you know, are there underground fences or underground, you know, anything that they might have underground that's their own. And then work to, yep, we have to take that in and, and then we will, like I said, we'll restore that and put seed on it and try to, you know, extremely careful working around landscape, those kinds of things.
Any other questions for Kathy?
No.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. And Elizabeth has my contact information. If you hear things, you know, as things get started, if you hear things from residents, I'll make sure that you can certainly get that to the council as well. Please don't hesitate to reach out, or the, or residents could reach out to me directly as well. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe we'll skip over item B. Is that something we can do?
I mean, if he's not here, we can, we can chat about the letter that he provided.
All right. Who's comment? Yeah.
I believe so. He was.
It was, I mean, he wanted that building removed, right?
Correct. So, yeah, the approval, the city council prior to my arrival, there's a purchase agreement that was signed with the city and Mr. Fisher, who was the purchaser, effective on June fifth, twenty twenty-three. The conditions were that the purchaser is required to remove the building from the city's property within twelve months of the execution of the agreement. So obviously, that's coming up pretty quickly. We're April fifteenth. They're looking at June fifth. And so Dr. Nagel was wondering, you know, does the city want the building removed, or could it be remodeled where it is? His second question was, would the city be open to an agreement with our association similar to what we have in Bird Island, where the city owns, ensures the property, and the association manages, maintains the property? Or three, would the city prefer the building to be moved to Bird Island and be done with it?
So if it stayed here, they would store equipment in it or something?
Field house.
A field house. What's a field house?
They'd have like batting gauges and pitching stuff in there and be somewhere to, you know, do baseball practice here on basically. Obviously, you're not going to fit a whole field in there, but they have a couple of lanes for batting, a couple of lanes for pitching.
So I would still recommend that it be moved. That corner of the building is encroaching into the railways wide away. So that's, that's a problem. So it'd still be the recommendation of staff that that building is moved. There currently hasn't been any detailed discussions about what the investment would be for the baseball association in this project, other than his letter saying, "Association manages, maintains the property." I don't know what that is. I don't have a dollar amount for that. So it certainly needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. The Parks and Recreation Committee would be a good place if you wanted them to dig into this request. I believe they have background in this request as well. But the pertinent question is, is are we sticking to the written agreement saying removal by June fifth? Or if there wants to be an extension of that date?
So what's the council's appetite for just extending this out, kicking this over to the Parks Committee, having them work on this with the old baseball association and presenting the council with a potential solution?
Well, is it an option to leave it there? Is that even something they should be discussing or?
I think because it's encroaching on the railroad, they don't have much of a choice on it.
Yeah.
Honestly, I'd, I'd love for it to be able to stay because then to have those facilities here would be great.
Yeah.
But I don't, logistically, I don't think it'll work.
My building's been there for fifty years.
Yeah.
So.
Just because something's been a problem for fifty years doesn't mean it should necessarily stay.
Well, it's only been our problem for two years when we decided to purchase it.
Yes, that's true too.
So. I guess, have we been paid for the building?
It is my understanding we have, but I can check that with Sean. Jasmine, do you have any confirmation on whether or not I'd have to check that with Sean?
I do believe that, did you mention that there was a refund?
You had mentioned that there was going to be a refund requested.
I hear rumors.
Okay.
So that would.
I can confirm.
Would that lead you to believe perhaps it has been paid for?
I don't know if it was called a refund or maybe we'll just forget this happened type deal. Oh, I did not make myself privy to all the details because I hate this building.
What's with the sudden disinterest anyway?
What's that?
What's with the sudden disinterest in it?
For me?
No, for Fisher.
I.
I believe it's cost prohibitive to move. That was my, that was the discussion I had with Dr. Nagel when he called the city hall to discuss this.
Thank you for that.
I guess I have a hard time allowing it, extending it. Personally, he's had a year to figure it out and just when now it's coming down to the, the end, he's trying to find a way out of it. If he formally requests a refund, well, I'd say we at least penalize thirty percent.
Everything, I don't. As much as I'd like to have more stuff here, it's probably a better fit in Briland anyways.
Oh, I agree with that.
Over there.
Right, I agree.
I mean, it, I, I would love to have more reason for people to come to our community, but.
But if they're going to move it anyway, you know, where would you put it then and would it go in?
Well, they can't, they're not, I think their plan, their plan would be to leave it where it's at, I think.
I don't think they could afford to move it anyway.
Oh.
I'm sure you can, can't. It was.
It needed to be gone or removed. Well, that was the whole point of buying it, but.
I don't know.
Something.
It was an opportunity to get rid of a blighted property adjacent to a residential area.
Yep.
I guess I'd like to find out what the feasibility of them, if they were actually going to take it over, can they actually move it? Are they going to have the funds to move it? Because if we extend it three, three weeks or three months, it's not going to matter if they can't get the funding. And they're a nonprofit, I would assume.
Yeah. They can tell us we're moving it this day. We have the funds. We're going to do it. That's one thing to come to present to us, but.
If it's just an idea right now, it's, I'm sorry, I.
And I think it's staying there is absolutely not an option. That shouldn't even be discussed.
No, if it's. Then I'd say we pay to just have it taken down and sell a scrap for what we can recoup.
What I can do is if you want to table this to next meeting, I'm happy to chase down some of these answers, and you guys can pick it back up again on May six, six, that Monday. That still gives them about a month.
Yeah, that works.
That's, it looks like options one and two are pretty well appetizing to the council.
Right, take out option three altogether.
Okay.
Comp plan.
I'm very excited to be presenting the twenty twenty-three City of Olivia Comprehensive Plan to you all for, I mean, that was the year. I know it's twenty twenty-four. For your hopeful adoption, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this as well as they voted unanimously to recommend the adoption of this plan to the city council. So some of the key highlights of this new comprehensive plan include in the land use chapter, there's measures to strengthen the vitality, attractiveness, and prospects of the city's downtown and to facilitate industrial and commercial development to grow employment opportunities. In the housing chapter, there are strategies to promote the development of affordable housing units and identify priority areas for residential infill and new housing. In the transportation chapter, there are some initiatives to develop an integrated and connected multimodal network to enhance pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and to improve the look and feel of US Highway two twelve through downtown. For economic development, there's policies to retain and grow existing businesses, to attract new businesses, and support local entrepreneurship. For Parks and Recreation, there are some goals to provide and maintain the city's parks and indoor/outdoor recreation areas. And then for community facilities and utilities, there's policies to ensure cost-efficient, financially sustainable utility services and excellent facilities for the city's needs. There's also a really great implementation chapter, which gives staff guidance on how to implement this plan moving forward, as well as a list of priorities, and it also outlines how to offer amendments to the comprehensive plan. So giving the Planning Commission, you know, we're going to try to make sure that they review it annually to make sure, see what's being done, what's not being done, offer amendments as necessary. So this can truly be a living document and not just something we checkmark and say, we've done it. Let's put it on the shelf for ten more years. So. And on a side note, our contract with Antonio ends at the end of this month, so this is a perfect time to pass this.
We have an opportunity to read this maybe four or five times over with.
Or ten.
Probably the change in this. Does anybody have any conversation to go out there for the comprehensive plan?
Just that'd be maybe nice to have a copy of it for us to reference.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, I'll call for a motion to for, for Resolution forty-four to adopt the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan.
So.
Second.
Motion by Patterness, seconded by Baumgartner to adopt the comp plan. Comprehensive plan. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Comprehensive plan has been approved by the council. Okay, another excellent piece of business here, the pole attachment agreement, Appendix A amendment. There were a couple volunteers from the council who agreed to brainstorm some solutions for our pole attachment agreement and amend Appendix A. And any, any of you two who are involved want to want to provide some detail?
Well, sure. So it's, the, the special use case here is that it's a pole attachment that uses electricity. And so there's a portion of the twenty dollars, well, it's twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents is what it brings. Pole for intent of that is to cover electricity. We have a maximum of a hundred watts that can be used. And then the attachment itself is ten fifty a month. So add those together, twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents, and that was we worked, we worked, we worked through it and came to an agreement, and that was, that's where we ended up, and it's, it's good.
And neither of them are flat fees. We've already built into the schedule how they are adjusted each year.
Yeah, electricity will follow the rates of electricity, and then the pole attachment part is tied to the CPI, so.
Great. We won't, won't fall behind on that.
No, I think it's, I think it's good.
I give Matt a lot of kudos for how he handled himself and every, how everything went during the meeting.
Thank you, man.
I was going to say, I think his costs are going up significantly, so he's paying his fair share, but it's not what we had originally signed in the contract, and we also have some tentative agreements for cost sharings of some things that we've already incurred because he'd signed the previous contract. So I feel like we came in, I feel like it came down to a pretty good, a pretty good compromise in the end.
Well, we appreciate staff and, and you two for, for hammering that out. Read through it and, and it looks, it looks like a good deal all around. I'll call for a motion. Do we need to approve?
Yes.
I'll call for a motion to approve the pole attachment agreement, Appendix A amendment.
Removed.
Second.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Patterness to approve Appendix A amendment of pole attachment agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm just curious, was the whole agreement tabled earlier, or was just that?
It was just the Appendix A.
Yes, the appendix. Okay, I wanted to.
It itself still stands.
I wanted to make sure the agreement was approved before.
Yep. Agreement has been approved in December. Yep, just the appendix.
Got a, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
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 I'll oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. We have one more piece of discussion items before we move on to, we.
I'll talk fast.
Okay. Go for it.
So the Parks and Recreation Committee met on April second, and they have voted to recommend the following park maintenance projects. So the first is a basketball court resurfacing at Hinton Park. The second is warming house tin on the building at Hinton Park, and the third is Dirks Park's concession stand. Some added maintenance there. They do have the budget for these in the park's budget for these maintenance projects. Additionally, we've been hearing that there are some drainage concerns at Dowling Square, particularly from the two business owners who, there is flooding in basement, not necessarily saying that Dowling Square is the reason for that, but the drain is very small. It wasn't, it wasn't engineered completely properly for the drainage. So we've been working with SEH and the drainage improvements and kind of resurfacing of Dowling Square are estimated at just over thirty-three thousand dollars, and that would be covered by the Stormwater Fund, which has plenty of funds to cover this, and then the park's budget will cover the necessary plans. They're looking at doing a rain garden around the drainage, as well as some benches and things to turn that more into kind of a little pocket park, add some greenery to the whole thing to really turn that into more of an asset for downtown, especially with new businesses serving food. There's more energy coming down there with holiday happening, so hopefully this is a nice gathering space for everyone.
I like that. I like the green space, the rain garden. I think that's, you know, that's, it's nice.
It's nice, yes. It's going to look really nice. So all of these things, there is budget for them in their prospective budgets to move forward. So the Parks and Recreation Committee recommended to the council that they move forward with these projects.
Call for a motion to approve these projects as described by the administrator.
So.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Ebers to approve the projects as.
There was a couple of bids in there?
Yes.
Sorry, just doing a little bid then?
Yes, doing a little bit. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, doing a little bit. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries, all right, right on time here, we'll temporarily recess the regular meeting. And open the local Board of Appeals and Equalization Meeting, so Doug. If you have the floor, man, absolutely, appreciate it.
I'll have you guys sign in the certification form here to pass her on. So I, I will point out too, I looked at the train member roster and Blanca and John. Trained, I believe, and I'm gonna see once where I have it and I can tell you when your training expires. John yours expires July first of this year, so they will, Department of Revenue, Kim in my office will send, send information out. The online training will be open again July one through February one, that'd be for the twenty twenty-five assessment. And Blanca, you are good for one more year, July first of twenty twenty-five. I believe those are the only two.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we've decided.
Did apologize, I only printed off five sales listings for you guys. So I'll pass them around, a couple of you would like to share.
We can share. Landis feels confident in his memory.
No, I don't think you do, but you'll look at us.
One more, if anybody would like one. So I guess, uh, first and foremost, anybody in the audience, have you guys had anybody, uh, make an appointment to come to this meeting or anything? Um, so we're required to be here a half hour then, um, give people an opportunity to be here. Um, I'll fill, fill you guys in on kinda what we done, by the way, this is Brenda for, uh, Brenda Vanderpoel from my office, she, uh. Did along with Randy Mertz some appraising in the city of Olivia this year, um, kind of a joint effort, Randy. Did some phased retirements, we put in less hours this year, so Brenda. Helped him out with, with the city of Olivia and the appraisal work for the twenty twenty-four assessment. So why we're here today is uh, for the twenty twenty-four Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. And it is for the January second of twenty twenty-four valuation of the properties in the city of Olivia for taxes payable in twenty twenty-five. Um, those sales that we use, a lot of the information that we collect and uh, base our valuation on would be. The sales of like kind properties, um, mainly things I'll talk to you about today. Um, dry, a lot of the sales are, are residential properties, I will touch a little bit on uh, commercial and apartments as well. Um, so that, actually that sales study year by the Department of Revenue Standards uh, is. October one, twenty twenty-two through September of twenty twenty-three. So we're, we're kinda historians, we, we are reacting to what's already happened in the market. Um, when you have largely increasing markets and we make changes, sometimes we're behind when that actual. Increase had happened and likewise with decreasing markets, sometimes those changes are, are, are something that's already happened, so. Just uh, one thing, uh, I did give you those sales, that's the residential sales. I think there were twenty-eight sales uh, on that, that first one with the yellow highlighting on that. That would be the sales why we're here today. I also gave you a second one that shows kinda what's going on now, cause we're already tracking sales. That are going, going to be happening for the twenty twenty-five are happening and will continue until October one of twenty twenty-four. Um, I'll just give you some statistics here. Say, find my. Sheet. Apologize here. My computer is acting slow. There we go.
Be doing a lot of living in a van down by the river when you live.
Alright, so I apologize for. So based on those sales that I gave you from October first to twenty twenty-two through September of twenty twenty-three. There were twenty-eight residential sales in the county or in the city, I apologize. And uh, the median sale price of those sales was a hundred sixty-six thousand, just over. Um, and we had a median ratio of eighty-seven point six percent. Um, what that median ratio is would be the, the difference between our actual value and, and what things sold for. Um, that ratio is, is uh, regulated by the Minnesota Department of Revenue and we're required by state law to be within ninety to a hundred and five percent. On average of all like kind properties, along with that ratio being at eighty-seven point six, we had a time trend. And that is a statistical analysis by the Department of Revenue that indicates market trends and, and it actually. We adjust those sales to, to uh, January second using that trend and the trend for twenty twenty. For assessment on residential was eleven point six five percent. Um, giving us a time trended ratio of seventy-nine point four six percent. Um, so in order for us to be within the parameters of the Department of Revenue Standards, we needed to increase values. So on average, uh, we did increase values fifteen percent in the city of Olivia. Um, which gave us a median ratio after our adjustments of ninety-four point eight three percent. Since then, we've been tracking sales and there, there have only been eight. Uh, since last October, uh, the median sale price is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one seventy-five. And we have a current untrended ratio of ninety-seven point nine six, so. That tells us we attained our goal of trying to catch the market that was increasing in the past. Um, don't know for sure, we don't, I don't feel like we have enough data to indicate if the market is continually increasing, um. Residential properties now will start seeing a lot of sales, it gets busy in the spring and, and goes on through the summer. Winter months are usually the slowest months, um, for, for residential property sales. Um, other changes that we did make in the city of Olivia was, uh, I did, I did a. Do between five and ten percent increase on, on some commercial or on commercial properties. And I also uh, made an adjustment of five to ten percent on apartments. And countywide, along with any property in the city of Olivia with egg, tillable egg land, we did increase five percent as well. Um, so those are the main, main increases that we did, does anybody have any questions on anything?
Absolutely, historically, um, is fifteen percent for a property value correction, is that? Is that significant?
In rural Minnesota, maybe, um, not, not, uh, not necessarily. Yeah, I, I don't know that, that we, we've been increasing um, values in all. In the past four years, it's been, it's been a really active market and, and it's been a strong selling properties, which you guys probably all, all see and know. Um, so that, that is, it is maybe a, a. On the higher end of what I've seen increase, I will tell you, it's not the highest we've done by any means in any town. Um, there's been some other communities that we've had to go up more than fifteen percent, um, if you guys remember last year, um. We probably only went up five percent, I think, on residential properties and, and maybe that anticipation of the market, we should have maybe. hindsight, we, we were in the parameters yet, but you know, I, I tried to get between ninety-five and a hundred percent to avoid the. Roller coasters, I don't go, you know, don't shoot for a hundred percent all the time to try and eliminate the ups and downs. Um, but yeah, I, I, it, it was, it's an increase that was noticeable, I'm sure. Yeah. And I, I guess there is one, one thing that I, I would like to, uh, well, anybody have any other questions first and foremost? Okay, so, so we did have a, a taxpayer in, in uh, the city of Olivia. A contact after they got their valuation notice and uh. I'll, I'll let Brenda fill you in on that, we're, we're actually. I'm looking to make a recommendation to you as a board to, to make an adjustment on this property. After, after Brenda inspected the property, so I'll, I'll let Brenda fill you in on that.
So, uh, this individual called into our office, uh, four oh six Fairview Avenue East. Um, he had had an appraisal done at some point last fall and he felt that the value that we had on it was too high, so. I went and inspected the property inside and out, um. We also looked at other sales, um, other light properties. Um, and I did determine that, you know, some adjustments would be valid and appropriate there, so. The value that we had originally had for payable in twenty-five for the twenty-four assessment was two hundred sixty-eight thousand. And we are recommending to lower that now to two hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred. If you have any questions on that or. Well, I went inside, there was a few things that were actually different on the inside than what we had in our records. You know, not major things, but just some basement finish that, you know, we thought was there, that was not. Just the overall condition and. Like that, um, were just a little bit different than we've been maybe had speculated before, so, um. Yeah, we just kinda, you know, studied quite a few things, looked at other houses, looked at other sales and. Made that determination, it's a little bit closer, um, and the homeowner was not. Entirely happy with that lower adjustment, but it was better than what we had before, so.
And so when you do that, is there rules and guidelines you have to follow, just like when you're doing your adjustments, I mean. Can you just pick a number that you want or?
Um, I mean, you know, we look at the grade, which is, um, you know, the. The quality of the construction, so this one is more of a modular type home. So I don't know if that was maybe something to consider, um, in my opinion, maybe it was a little bit. Less of a grade, um, than what we originally had put on there. Um, it's just some of the finishes inside, maybe not just that has higher quality, some things weren't finished that were assumed finished. Things in the garage, you know, we thought there was maybe. Finish in there and there was not, so it's kinda, it was some subjective and some objective things that were adjusted for that, so. Yep, yep, sales and, and like homes too, yep.
Yeah, and, and we, we have, uh. My staff put a lot of training, we have all the license with the Department of Revenue, um, we're. Senior accredited Minnesota assessors, so, um, you know, much like a, a person that would appraise for. For a mortgage or for anything like that, we have the same background in training. Um, at the end of the day, it is an opinion of value, um, our job has a lot of subjectivity to it because of, uh. You're trying to anticipate what you think something would sell for, um. With Brenda not seeing the inside of this property, I feel like it, it's warranted, um. You have to make assumptions when you don't catch people at home and do the best you can with what you have for information. And when you have more information, you can make a better accurate decision on your value. And this, this allowed her to maybe have that capability because of that person, so whole concept of the whole valuation notice and appeals process too, you know. Um, that's why we, we encourage people, if, if they have questions or concerns that, that they do that and we can. Have an opportunity to maybe take a little closer look at these properties.
I was gonna say that Doug, that Brenda probably usually wouldn't go into every single house, it wouldn't be. Something unless you get a call that they would want a further investigation into the appraisal that it would happen.
Can't take action right now, cause we're in recess.
Actually can, because it's, it's part of our, our appeal meeting, so you can take action on this particular item, absolutely.
Well, I'll call for a motion, uh.
Mister Mayor Council, I just wanna verify it doesn't reduce it, I would assume it wouldn't, this one property doesn't reduce the aggregate by more than one percent, right?
That is one thing we are to consider, yes, I, I, I've never, I've never had a, uh, appeals in, in my twenty-five years that I've had to even worry about that, so. Yes, yes, it does meet the parameters of, of, of being able to, to make an adjustment on that property. Make the adjustment then.
Motion's been made by Paterno, seconded by Ferguson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same sign. Alright.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the recommendation.
So as far as that goes, I have nothing more to report to you, um. We have to be here another thirteen minutes, so any questions or, or anything you wanna chat about, feel free. If you guys wanna talk about other things, feel free, um. It, it, it has been interesting, uh, since COVID, um, really the, uh, the increase. In, in the real estate market as a whole in our county, um, it's, it's been interesting to see, see the. Property selling so well and, and it, it's a positive for the communities and, uh. Olivia is always kinda the driving force behind all the sales in the county. Um, and there's other jurisdictions now that are not quite as active on volume of sales, but, but there's. Strong sales, we've had a lot of, a lot of, uh, eastern part of the counties have had a lot of increases in values, um. Hutchinson influence maybe to some degree is, is maybe the driving force behind that, we're. We're hearing that when we verify all our sales and that's another thing too, we, we do talk to the buyer seller on, on every one of those sales. And, uh, we have thirty-two criteria that, that a sale. If it met that criteria, it would not be considered a good for study sale, so. We're, it's very important for us to, when it, when we're using it to base our valuation of other properties on it, it's. Very imperative that we have market sales in there and, uh, you know, uh, estate sale, relative sale. Unusual financing are examples of, of those types of sales that we would not use. So upon our verification of, to, of, to the eastern cities, we, we were hearing it's things like that, that. You know, there's maybe some people that could buy a lot more house for a lot less money and Buffalo Lake and drive the Hutch to work and. Uh, which is great for a county, I mean, so.
Is that, uh, development out on Lake Preston, is that still, is that still evolving?
It is, it is evolving, um, boy, the, there's actually a development on the south side of Lake Alley as well. That, that's really taken off, um, they, they. Subdivided that into, I wanna say twelve or thirteen lots and I would say. Two-thirds or more of those lots are. And I would say two thirds or more of those lots are sold. And there's probably a half dozen with houses going up or or uh. Planning on being put up and and that is, and and Preston is pretty much the whole. West side now is pretty much developed with with all the houses that those lots would take on the lakeside. I think they have some to the west and that cul-de-sac and and that, that there's some lots for sale, but yeah, it's uh. There's there's some new houses up in that next to the woods, so. And of course, Lake Alley on the east side is pretty much fully developed. There was a little development that did happen uh across the road, kind of. Would it be southwest of the golf course or kinda on the west side of the golf course, there was some plots. Uh there was a subdivision there too, it's like six lots, and I think three or four of them have. Um haven't haven't been by there real recently to see if anything is dirtwork or anything's going on, but. They sold for for building purposes too, so.
Yeah, we have a lake in Olivia here too, so.
There you go.
Yeah, we're surrounded by our land that we own with parks. It's gonna have a scenic walking path.
It'd be very nice. There's actually the last lot on that Fairview sold, and they started building on it.
Is that two new houses offered this year?
Uh yeah, the second one's gonna start this year too.
Hmm. Does it impact their interest rates, like being higher and I mean, obviously, these values are going up, but.
If I if I were to say I uh maybe on the this this eight sale one that's currently finally maybe. Um we were waiting for it for a couple of years and it didn't seem to be happening or affecting things. Um I I truly do feel like there's there's a enough demand for housing in our county. Um that that people are still paying the price um for for properties that people are asking. And uh it 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 should have probably happened sooner, I've I've heard. More metro counties and and uh talking with colleagues about it, that it maybe hit faster than us, but we didn't. Go up at the rate they did either, I think their market is a lot more volatile and it and it reacts faster to those types of things. I've always, this counties, we've been really steady with values, I've never had to increase a whole lot, but I've never had to decrease a whole lot. Especially when it comes to residential properties.
Do they, do your counterparts in other more urban areas, do they have property values go down ever?
Oh yeah, they've had a, they've had a market crash um. That had been twenty thirteen, fourteen, somewhere. Probably coming on ten plus years ago, there was a pretty strong crash. Um there there is a lot, a lot of uh foreclosures and a lot of problems for a lot of years. Lot of mortgage companies that probably aren't in business anymore and. Yeah, there there was, um it's been pretty, pretty decent lately, um hasn't been. Been great, great, like in the past six months, I would say now as far as growth. But you know, the thing with with those those jurisdictions too, is you have so many new homes going up. And I mean, if you drive just two twelve and you just, I bet if you go every few months, you come. You know, new houses that are just being built, well, that's competition too, and it's just growing so fast out there, so. It's just, that's a whole different world. Can't develop properties fast enough, you know, I don't think, and especially in the prime areas, you you know, talk in southwest corners and southeast corners. And I think it's going on to the north as well, the metro area.
More affordable homes, I feel like, you know, it's some people, you you just put a price right out.
Mm hmm. Yeah, your first time home buyer, I I've never, I haven't really done the research, but I just from my history, I've been doing this twenty five years. And I think starter homes when I started were probably fifty thousand dollars. And now there's starter homes selling for two hundred thousand dollars and and it has changed even here quite a bit over the course of those years, but.
We're looking at starter homes for for some of these. Land opportunities that we have and like a double wide prefab is going for like two fifty now.
Hmm.
Land donated.
Right.
Yeah, it it's.
Around eighty thousand.
Uh huh.
It was back in oh three. Twenty one years old.
Not much has happened since then.
Not all year.
You always plan it that then at our next meeting, there'll be people wanting to ask questions about this every year.
You know, the funny.
Somebody comes in wanting to talk about taxes.
The funny thing is, is we scheduled it a week, a week earlier now, so.
Also, it'll be too many.
Well, it's probably better for you guys to wanna align it with an actual board meeting, so we try to accommodate that as best we can. So you don't have, you all don't have to come in for a half hour and.
Yeah, it's helpful.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
What do you see as a like your biggest drivers of value? Maybe besides location, you know, like probably being on the golf course, right? But like what what's what's trendy?
Really, really, the location is the driving factor, even within a community, um I feel like it's still is a driving factor. Um there's, there's a lot of, a lot of eye appeal, I mean, that that's a necessary thing. Um. That's a very good question, there's a combination of things, actually. Probably remodeled kitchen, remodeled bathrooms, they really, they're really worthwhile.
Ash trees.
Yeah.
You mentioned now, it seems like it's leveling out a little bit.
I figure maybe a little bit. Um we'll see where interest rates go and it could be maybe just a lack of availability of properties for sale. Um I haven't really tracked like how long things are on the market, that's usually a driving factor yet, I don't, I haven't on the new sales yet. Um that's a driving factor as to supply and demand is is how long it was on the market and. I just heard of it, well, there's a property in Ranville, for example, that that was for sale and it was pretty high. Uh so the, you know, you get your starters and then your families are maybe grow growing that home and they're moving. So a family that outgrew this home, bought this other place and I heard the the their house was on the market for forty eight hours and it sold for asking price. We've seen some over asking prices, which is common in the metro area and we don't typically see that around here.
I read that uh like with all the industry expanding like in Alabama, whatever, they're building all these plants and everything. They're having trouble getting people to work there because no one wants to give up their low interest rates on their homes.
Correct.
They don't wanna buy that.
They don't wanna relocate, you know?
The New York Times today.
Was it?
It's about people don't wanna give up their low interest rate homes.
Interesting problem.
Yeah.
And if you think about it, we aren't really that much off of what interest rates were fifteen, twenty years ago. I mean, by race, where interest rates are aren't horrible, they were just so great for ten years, you know, and. Yeah, oh, yeah.
You guys have fifteen more seconds to fulfill your obligation, taxpayers of Olivia. Well, we appreciate uh you guys coming in, Doug and Brenda, and and walking us through the uh the property value news and changes. And uh especially appreciate you guys advocating on behalf of of the um taxpayer who was looking at having their um property adjusted, so. Welcome to come back to any other meeting.
Anytime, just ask me and I can come if you ever have anything you'd like me to chat about, I gladly will.
Cool, thank you, guys.
Are we adjourned, did you make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I don't think we adjourn this moment.
I didn't either, but.
Right?
We have to adjourn the Board of Appeal meeting.
Are you notifying that individual or would you like us to do that?
Can do that, if you're okay with us doing that.
Are you, you're okay, Mr.?
Yeah, absolutely.
Second. Motion's been made by Paternas and seconded by Blanca to uh close the or adjourn the uh local Board of Appeal and equalization meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign, okay, we are reopen the regular meeting, thanks again, guys.
Thank you, have a good evening.
As well. All right, now it's time to receive some ports, we have some reports, do we have any reports from council?
I have already reported, I think.
Yeah, that was a good report.
Oh, um I guess Suzie got the award for the corncade. I'd just like to mention the word that Suzie did, because she got it through the mains, she got the award through the Main Street program for all the work she did with the corncade. And in the switch over from the business being where it was, like helping start the business and then helping push it to move it to make it bigger. So she did get an award for Main Street, so I just wanna point that out, because she does a lot of work with it, so.
Absolutely, that's a great.
Yeah, thank you. Any other reports from council?
We had a pool board meeting, just kinda talking about reopening and. Throwing around ideas for future plans to. Hopefully drive more engagement and activity at the pool. Um we are also encouraging citizens to form an. A citizen action group or advisory group. To again, try to drive engagement to getting more people to use the pool.
I bet you'll get a lot of participation in that.
Well, there's at least three of them.
I can tell you get involved with Mary Jo or soon.
Yeah, I'm sure they are aware.
To say, it is those two and I've already told somebody else they're on it because they bother me at work every two weeks, but. Sorry, too late, no.
Are they uh warming the water up a little bit? Do you know?
Yes.
Or two degrees?
Yeah. Yeah, a couple of degrees, yes, trying to strike a good compromise between the lap swimmers and swimming lessons and stuff like that, but yes.
When you have.
Increasing the temperature.
Such a low base, when you add two degrees, that's like six percent.
Talk about all the units of energy it takes to heat that water.
Anyways, moving on.
Any uh reports from staff?
Uh yeah, to um three, three reports. Uh so one, I regard to inform all of you that um there is a resignation of our Public Works Assistant Superintendent Jesse Zeitz. Um effective this Friday, April nineteenth. Um we have our auditors, which will be here the week of April twenty second, so next week. Um and then we are looking for a couple of new um members for our Public Utilities Commission. So if you know of anybody who's interested, please feel free to point them in my direction or Councilman Baumgartner's direction. We can answer questions about the commission. Uh the next meeting for PUC will be in early May, where we will invite Kathy back to talk more in depth about Nuvera.
Do you need, do we need to direct you to advertise for the assistant supervisor position?
Um we are planning on looking over the job description and following kind of our normal process for hiring. However, we are making a slight change, instead of only opening it to um city employees for the first ten days. We're just gonna open it broadly initially, encouraging any city employees who'd like to apply, certainly can, but we're gonna. Instead of spending those ten days and then opening it public, we're just gonna open it to the public.
Okay.
I don't think that needs an official motion.
Should we advertise for the PUC or do we wanna do it just word of mouth if we can?
We certainly can put, so we also have a one position open on our planning commission, so we could package these all together with the application to just say. If anybody's looking to get involved, here are the openings we have, sure.
And also, if anyone's listening, like you don't have to have any special knowledge to be on the PUC, mostly you just would need to be curious.
Be a consumer of utilities.
It, well, yeah, 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 you have to be a stakeholder, but I mean, you don't need an engineering degree, that's what I'm trying to say.
Are you just talking about units of energy over there?
But that's not a prerequisite to joining the mission.
Always just set up a, oh, I got it.
He's the council representative, technically, he's not even a voting member, so.
All right, we'll call uh everybody in a good place here, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second, motion's been made by ever seconded by Paternas to adjourn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.